Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of Chesapeake Beach. It's November 19th, 2025, and we are going to call the meeting into order. And roll call, please, and we'll start on my right. And I'm Cindy Green Gold.
I'm Mary Sue Graceman.
Christopher Smith.
And please note for the record that Kelly Hahn and Commissioner Ruddke are both absent tonight. But we do have a quorum, so we're good there. Okay, everybody, please stand for the pledge allegiance. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the citizens of America, to the republic, and to justice as well. That's nice, isn't it? Thank you. Okay, now we will move to number three, approval of the November 19th, 2025 Planning Commission Agenda. Do I see any additions or changes? Seeing nothing, I will ask for a move approval. What do you want? Thank you. Secondary, a second? Got to get my words straight in my brain, I'll be good. Uh, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, now we are going on to the approval of the minutes of November 5, 2025, Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Any changes? Okay, I'll need a vote, all in favor of approving. Aye and no, okay, thank you. Okay, number five is just an item of business here. Next month, we will be electing a chair and vice chair so that they can begin in January to, to use their new positions. So if anybody's interested, please think about it and maybe let somebody know that you're interested so you can be nominated, and then we'll move forward. Okay, now we're going to go to number six, and as public comment on any agenda item or anything else. Do we have anybody from the public here? Oh, yes, ma'am, yes, please come to the podium and state your name and your address.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Tanya Darbandi, and my address, my current address or the address that?
In Chesapeake Beach.
Chesapeake Beach, in Chesapeake Beach is going to be 8501 Bayside Road, Unit C4, which is commercial, Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, 20732. So I'm here because I'm interested in purchasing this place that is located at the address that I just stated. The first floor, it is at the, it is in your neighborhood, actually, it is the Horizon on the Bay, the tall building. The first floor of this building is commercial, and this unit that I'm interested in purchasing, I have already put an offer. It is, for now, it is a physical therapy practice, and the owner is running it, which is a physical therapy doctor. But they are, he is thinking of retiring, so he is selling the place. So the building has already 77 condominiums. Average resident age is 55 and above. Many of them, of those residents already rely on the physical therapy downstairs. They just have to go downstairs, they don't have to go to another building or drive anywhere. So this shows a strong need for accessible wellness in the area. My proposal is to have a Pilates center there, wellness Pilates, and?
You have an interesting party over here, yes.
So Pilates, actually, let me, I give you a little history. Pilates is based on the name of person that invented it, George Pilates, and he actually invented it, starting helping the injured people in hospitals. He started with bed in hospitals, and then it evolved to what it is today. So it can be, it does help the, it has benefits for mobile, mobility, balance, strength, and all overall health. It has low impact classes, the one, the business that I have in mind, it has low classes, which is good for older adults, and it can also have higher impact for workouts for a younger age. This business, I'm thinking that is going to provide a safe area, a safe environment for all ages. I did some small research, and there is no fitness in Chesapeake Beach, actually, like there is curves for women only, very small area. Everything that I found is in North Beach and in Owings, so people have to travel to those two places or to Annapolis. For Pilates, they have to go to Annapolis, there is no Pilates around this area. So I thought maybe the gap may be influenced by the current zoning. The zoning right now is RV1 for that building, and it says wellness and fitness is not permitted. So I'm asking for a zoning modification, if possible, for that place. I am, I would like to say that this proposal is consistent with Calvert County's comprehensive plan, also compatible with existing commercial footprints. And this business will not create issues. I have talked to associations over there, it is, it is welcome, they are welcoming this idea. It will not create issues with traffic, noise level, or parking, or the hours of operation. It will be for the people of the building, residents in the building and people from outside. It is a small business, so it doesn't have, like, the parking is, everything works with a small business concept over there. So I would like to say that I'm committed to meeting all safety requirements, licensing standard, and conditions that the county may require. I respectfully request for your approval for this space so it can save residents of the building and also the community of Chesapeake Beach community. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. I do have handouts if you want to have.
It is why. Thank you.
It's up to Paige. So I want to get everything she gets.
Well, funny. Thank you. Tanya, we will be working on this hopefully tonight. So when, what is your, I assume you're in escrow right now, is that the case, or what's happening?
They are thinking about it, but they said before they.
Okay.
Actually, it was, it is good timing with when I called Sarah, and she was very helpful, and she told me she invited me to come here, thank you. So I would, I mean, I would, before I go with the offer, I would like to know if it is approved or if there is a possibility of approval, because when I purchase it, they want me to, for two or three months, they still want to operate there, and then they leave, and then, so this, I thought this time might be good for me to wait and see if I can get the permit, and I would really.
A question while you're here, has the building talked to you about how many parking spots you get with this?
The agent did, and the agent has talked to them. So there are some reservations already, and there are a bunch of visitor parkings, and this is going to be only like for an hour. I think at all times, there is, there's going to be, not going to be more than 12 people at the place, then that includes me, receptionist, instructor, and probably between six or eight. Based on the space, I have done the study, I cannot have more than six or eight machines there.
Okay.
So it's not a big business, hopefully one day, maybe, but for now, it is like, if it is like only 12 people at the, at each hour, it's got, at the most, it's going to be.
And the hope is that quite a few of them will be coming from the building, thus meeting some of the parking needs.
Yes, so they have their own parkings, and then they already, the therapy, the physical therapy has been there since 2005. So they already have their clientele, and I talked to, of course, not all, but some of the residents, and they welcomed the Pilates idea.
Okay, we're probably going, we're going to hopefully get to that tonight, but we have another item that we have to talk to about first. So you may sit and wait and see if we get to that, but on the other hand, if we don't, then you've been sitting just so, listen to us chit chat. But if we do get to it, we might be able to make a decision for you tonight, I'm hoping. So it's up to you what, you know, what you're able to do, sit and wait, and watch, or just sit and watch.
We're fascinated.
Fast when it comes to things like that. In fact, we might actually make you up, we'll push you up to the top is what we probably would do, and when we get to that section. Okay, Tanya, thank you. Okay, now we are on to old business, believe it or not, presentation by the Critical Area Commission. And Ms. Franklin will go ahead and give us a little staff presentation here, please.
All right, so we are talking about coastal resiliency, and we do have some guests with us this evening from the Critical Area Commission, and you guys correct me if I don't get your last names right. It's Charlotte Sharon and Jamelia Soden.
Jamelia Soden, yeah.
Soden. Sorry.
No, you're fine.
And so what we had talked about at the last meeting, and we floated when we were looking at our Critical Area Regulation update, was a resilience overlay, or an overlay for the town that looks at sea level rise and flooding, and creates some higher mitigation standards for that area, and that's consistent with the town's coastal resiliency plan. But we were talking about implementing this through an amendment to the Critical Area Regulations, and it's something that I've actually spoken with Critical Area Commission about a couple of times. And so we've asked them to join us so that you guys can ask questions about, you know, what that would look like, what kind of regulations you might be able to put in there. And also, Jamelia has a lot of experience in fee and lieu, and that's going to be critical to these higher levels of mitigation. Not everyone is going to be able to meet their mitigation on site. And in some cases, as we've discussed, you might not want to necessarily meet it on site because there's maybe a bigger stormwater project or shoreline project that would protect the community better than onsite mitigation. And so you would want the fee and lieu program to help fund that for that community.
I don't know if everybody understands what the fees and lieu program is, Chris, do you understand it?
I would love to hear.
Yeah, I think you may want to find out a little bit.
You're right, that Chris wasn't with us when we, or Commissioner Smith wasn't with us when we did the Critical Area Regulations. And so the fee and lieu is when someone has a permit in the critical area, and especially in the critical area buffer, they have mitigation requirements. Typically, for, you know, an individual lot, this is just going to be a planting requirement. For larger commercial lots, it has to do with stormwater calculations. But if you can't meet that requirement on site, then you can pay a fee to the town instead of meeting that requirement. Now, it's been the town's policy not to accept fee and lieu, to have everyone meet the requirements on site because the town doesn't want to have people who can pay, be able to kind of get out of mitigation to, by paying. But this overlay and long-term planning with coastal resiliency and the efforts we need to make kind of changes the dynamic of that, right? We do want people to pay for the things that are going to protect the community, even if those things are going to happen offsite. Does that help?
Okay. Okay, I think everybody's now in touch with what fees and lieu are, okay, now you can go ahead, thank you.
So I don't know if you guys want to talk about this at all, or if we just want to take questions from the?
Yeah, we can give like a quick, this is actually a very timely discussion for us as well because last year, the Legislative Assembly added into the Critical Area Law a requirement that we do consider climate change and resiliency concerns.
I don't know if her speak, her, do you have the little green light on?
Is it green? The green light is on.
Then move it a little closer so that you can, there you go.
Is that better?
Yes.
I'll start over. So last year, the Legislative Assembly updated the Critical Area Law to require us to consider climate change and climate resiliency within our program. And so those changes were made to the actual Critical Area Law, and we are currently in the process of promulgating regulations as part of COMAR, the Code of Maryland, that will kind of be a bit more specific on how that climate change and coastal resiliency, how those aspects should be considered within a local program. And so when we talked to Sarah, a lot of the kind of ideas I think that the town has been considering are very similar to some of the ideas we've been having discussions about in terms of our new regulations. And those regulations likely won't be officially a part of our COMAR Chapter 27 until the end of next year, but it's very timely that you all are kind of thinking about this ahead of, ahead of the curve. So, you know, we're here to kind of answer any questions in, in terms of, you know, tools that might be helpful or different kind of ideas. And, and as Sarah said, the fee and lieu aspect is also something that we have been working over the last year to create a fee and lieu guidance document for our local jurisdictions because with the changes to the law last year, in our perspective, those actually added a lot of flexibility to how mitigation can be met. Previously, we had three goals of the Critical Area Law, to protect habitat and water quality, and then also to accommodate development. Now we also have two new goals, to consider climate change and climate resiliency, as well as considering impacts to overburned or underserved communities. And so a lot of the conversations that we're having around those two new goals tie into potential fee and lieu programs because that money can now potentially be spent on resiliency-type projects, and also things like providing public access to communities that may not have that, and other kind of environmental justice issues and that kind of thing. So that's, it's all kind of, you guys are a great melting pot of kind of all the things that we've been working on over the last year. So we're very excited to be down here to talk to you all.
All right, does anybody so far have any questions? I mean, we'll have running questions if we need them. We kind of are very loosey-goosey as far as how we want to produce this information. It's illegal, you know, yes, but we, of course, have a committee that did an entire project. You've got the, you understand that we are pretty well fortified with information and whatnot, and now we've got our website that we're, that we're using also to understand better what we've got here. And I think we incorporate a lot of this within our last comprehensive plan, which was only about two, you know, two, was it two years ago? So that we, three years ago that we'd now finished that. But we're so cognizant of our concerns, our issues, because we've got flooding in certain areas already, so we're already, I think, wasn't there a committee set up just for flooding, Ms. Franklin? Don't we have a committee that you met with today, or what was that?
Oh, so there's a nuisance flooding committee and nuisance flood plan.
Yeah, so, so the question is, are we coordinating all these people together? We've got this committee, that committee. But as far as coastal resiliency, I'm assuming that whatever the state is doing will be part of that plan and more. We probably will have our own individual ideas and.
Yeah, and I think that's definitely something where we've been very cognizant of in terms of the conversations we're having about the new regulations because we do realize that it's not likely a one-size-fits-all kind of solution. And so, you know, there are, every jurisdiction within the critical area has its own program, has its own critical area program. The state law and regulations just kind of set like minimum standards. And so ideally, those programs are tailored like very much to the jurisdiction that they are serving, right? And so we definitely plan to maintain that flexibility and uniqueness for, you know, for each jurisdiction.
In addition to that, the fee and lieu guidance document that we've currently been developing, and you mentioned the nuisance flood plans.
Bring that a little bit closer to you so that we can.
Sorry, the nuisance flooding plan, flood plans that you've been working on and the committee that you've been working with, we highly encourage in this guidance to also lean into current planning efforts within the jurisdiction. So what is identified in your nuisance flood plan? And can you address some of those coastal resilience issues that are identified in those planning documents through the use of the fee and lieu program as well? So that crossover and kind of not reinventing the wheel is highly encouraged throughout that whole document.
So we brought up the idea of the fact that this town hasn't really used a fees and lieu program so much, only because we want people to mitigate appropriately. How would you set up a fees and lieu program where people would not take advantage of that situation?
So in the document and in our law, we have kind of a no net loss bottom line. And so we've set up the fee and lieu document to be one to.
Of tree canopy, sorry.
Tree canopy, sorry, no net loss of tree canopy. So like when you're clearing in the critical area buffer, we are still expecting that one-to-one, that no net loss to be planted back. And so in our fee and lieu guidance document, we still have that expectation that one-to-one will be met. Mitigation rates in the critical area do vary, so things like buffer disturbance might carry a higher mitigation rate, like three-to-one. That excess of that two-to-one that you would get above the direct replacement of the tree loss or the planting loss can go to the more flexible spending bucket of how can we address resilience? How can we do these larger-scale projects? How can we look at stormwater comprehensively? And so we've kind of structured the document in that we still maintain no net loss of these trees, the canopy, in the critical area, but we also are allowing the greater flexibility with the extra funds that are raised through the fee and lieu.
Yeah, so if you theoretically wanted to still encourage some level of mitigation back on site, so if somebody clears on their property, you could theoretically require that replacement of one-to-one be done back on the property, and then any mitigation above that could potentially default to fee and lieu or something like that.
And is there, there's obviously a bureaucracy set up in each little town to handle all the fees and loews, and that's another issue. The cost of administering all this.
Yeah, so we do not manage funds for fee and lieu, so it would be done at the local level. And there is guidance in the fee and lieu document in terms of the accounting and kind of keeping track of what the impacts associated with the fee and lieu are so that you can, you know, make sure that you're getting appropriate mitigation back when you actually do the projects with the fee and lieu money, so.
Seems like it's a budgetary item that it's ripe for abuse, and I mean, I hate to say that, but I don't know how you account for things in bureaucracy.
Yeah, so the, most, a lot of our jurisdictions have fee and lieu programs. So Charles County, I think, is the only county that I know of that doesn't collect a fee and lieu. I know for a municipality, it's perhaps a bit bigger of a lift just because of resources and that kind of thing. But the only requirement in our law in terms of separating out what fee and lieu money is collected for is for buffer mitigation. So that amount of money would be kept kind of tallied separately. That doesn't necessarily mean it has to be used for separate projects, but in terms of like the reporting and the tracking, that money should be tracked separately. The fee and lieu guidance that Jamelia's been working on, we do have like an attachment to it that shows kind of a, it's like a template tracker, basically, if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, so we have, it's a template tracker, like she said, spreadsheet, and it talks about, or guides how to account for the different types of impacts that are occurring and what the specific fees are collected for. So buffer impacts, forest and developed woodland clearing is another thing that we could collect fee and lieu for. Lot coverage is another thing that could be collected for fee and, so like these different impacts. And then it accounts, and it has the individual projects that it is collected from, the impact and the rate that it's collected at, and the amount of money. And then on the other side of things, it has the projects, you have expenditures on that is being spent. So what specific project is being, is it being spent on? Are like plantings, coastal resilience projects, how much money, what's the impact? And so it has this accounting sheet to ensure that the money that's coming in is spent appropriately and is also still being spent too, because there has been issues too where we want to make sure that the fees that are being collected are being spent appropriately.
And yeah, and there is also, I'm pretty sure in the law, that the fee and lieu money cannot default to like general funds.
Yeah.
So that is, you know, and there are actions that the commission can take if that is happening, so.
So I, well, I mean, yeah, I guess there'd be no way for us to really know one way or the other if it's, how it's being appropriated, but, you know, I don't know if that'll be our jurisdiction. Yes.
I have a question just to like wrap my head around this because it seems to me that the fee and lieu is mostly going to be to like residents on relatively small projects, and I'm assuming that the fees are relatively low, but then it feels like the kinds of projects we're talking about wanting to put money towards feel like way more.
Yeah.
Is this, am I like doing the math right in my head?
So Sarah, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that first, and I can add on to, too, because I know you had talked about setting mitigation rates and that kind of thing, too, so.
So, so we actually have some of the higher fee and lieu rates. It was one of the questions that the commission asked of me when they were looking at our update. So yes, there's a lot of little residential lots that this will apply to, and it's not going to be a lot of money. But if you kind of, if you look at the mapping, right, so depending on, and this map doesn't match up, our coastal resiliency mapping has kind of like this whole area, right? This is not residential, this is commercial. And so as you do commercial projects that are along the shoreline, that are more heavily, or is some residential, but more heavily impacted and having a bigger impact on the community, that's where the funds are going to be to say, yes, you can complete this commercial project that is bringing you money, but you also need to protect the residents through the fee and.
Okay, if you wanted to add anything to it. Yeah, well, and I would just say that, you know, from our perspective, typically what we don't want to see is a lot of fee and lieu money just sitting and not being used. However, if a jurisdiction has a plan for the projects they want to spend their fee and lieu money on, and it's a matter of waiting to accrue enough money to implement those projects, that is kind of part of what we've laid out in the fee and lieu guidance to kind of establish that. So, yes.
Because it seems like a little bit worrisome, like you don't want to be waiting years as you collect enough so that then like damage is being done, so that you get the pot big enough.
And there are also, there are also some suggestions in the fee and lieu guidance on how you can maximize your fee and lieu money, like using it as matches for grant opportunities and things like that. If there's a specific project you know you want to do, there's potential for, for kind of taking advantage of some of those opportunities also, and that's also discussed in the fee and the guidance.
And fees and lieu projects cannot be on private property, is that correct?
No, they can.
Oh, they can be on private property?
Yeah, there's, so depending on the type of project, typically, there is usually some type of like protective covenant agreement. It doesn't have to be an easement, sometimes it is an easement, but there is usually some type of protection placed over the. But there is usually some type of protection placed over the project if it is on private property. But that does happen, not infrequently. So.
Okay. All right. So I guess the question is, how can, well, I guess we have no way of protecting the monies that come in from, you know, fees and lieu. But do you guys have oversee power? You don't oversee. It sounds like you're saying we, but you don't mean you.
So there's a reporting requirement in the in the regulations that each year, the kind of what's been collected and how it's been spent that gets reported to us each year. Other than that kind of oversight, you know, we are typically not involved in, you know, day to day kind of collections and expenditures and that kind of thing. It's just the annual reporting.
Okay, good. Commissioner Smith, do you have any other questions?
No, this is a lot of good information I'm absorbing here. So I have any questions right now?
Commissioner Grisman?
What he said.
Okay, what he said. Anything more? I'm sure Commissioner Brown doesn't have anything to bring to this one because he knows everything about this already. And you've already asked your question. Okay. They're still working on this thing.
No, he's helping me, not they.
What else do we want to, what else do we want to, and now that we have them here, I know we wanted them here when we were working on the critical area report here. But what else do we need to ask them? Because we're limited in what we're thinking here.
I don't know if we want to talk about, because one of the reasons we talked about this specific overlay was, if you guys recall, there was a 200 foot buffer that you wanted to put in because you wanted to increase mitigation. And the 200 buffer, buffer didn't work, right? Because the buffer regulations are shore word of your belt environment. And so, you know, maybe like what kind of mitigations or regulations are you all thinking about with regard to, in relation to what you wanted to do with that buffer? What are you kind of thinking for this overlay? It's a good time to ask them if it's something that would be allowable.
Did you understand what Ms. Franklin was talking about?
This is all, this is all very new to me. So this is.
Okay. So when you're talking about the buffer, I know there was, you know, my desire to try to extend that buffer from 100, I think it was 100 to 200, and we all said eh, you know, it's really only 100 that everybody wants to be at. And that's the state standard. And so forget the 200. And I guess my thought at the time of extending it was just to give us a little bit bigger area because we've got a little bit more, it seems like a little more flooding potential in this, in this town. So that the longer area that we have to do buffer, the better we are. But I could be wrong there.
So I, correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah. I think the concern on our end with that is that much of that 200 feet along the shoreline is already developed within the town of Chesapeake Beach. And so when you apply our buffer regulations to very developed areas, you just end up requiring people to seek variances constantly for any redevelopment they might want to do. And so I think that was kind of our advice was that might not be the best way to get at what you're trying to get at because it's just kind of a burden on property owners and applicants then at that point to just have to continuously ask for a variance. So I think the overlay, that the resilience overlay is a better option because then you can kind of set different rules for that overlay area, right? We have like the requirements and standards in our regulations for what is required in the buffer. And that's kind of the minimum standard. And like I said, those don't really work for highly developed areas. So if you create this overlay, resilience overlay, you can kind of set your own rules, I think, for that. And, you know, some of what Sarah had talked about were like increased mitigation requirements or things that we've been discussing in terms of our new regulations are related to like design standards and potentially requiring higher like freeboard elevation in structures that might be placed within a vulnerable area. We've also talked about limiting certain uses in those vulnerable areas. You know, obviously I think things like public infrastructure, like hospitals or, you know, public buildings, like we don't want to put those in vulnerable areas, right? Because that creates a whole slew of problems for people. But maybe there are certain uses that would be okay in a vulnerable area, you know, because they would only be there for a certain amount of time, or they are low risk in terms of flooding and that kind of thing. So obviously like open spaces, parks, like those kinds of things, that would make sense, right? And even some other like potentially more intense uses, but just that we know are going to have a lifespan that is shorter than the predicted flooding for that area. If that makes sense.
Um, I know one of the things that we talked about in the comprehensive plan and the text memos thereafter was changing some of the uses of some of the zones in order to eliminate the intensity of the uses. So in other words, we took residential use out of the commercial zone, et cetera. Because it's going to be a highly, I think of probably a highly flooded area at some point down in your future. So we did things like that to try and offset any concerns.
And I think that makes a lot of sense. You know, there've unfortunately been a lot of like stories in the news lately of, of major flooding events that have led to loss of life. I think that's, obviously, public safety is like a huge concern there in, you know, in terms of where flooding might happen and what that area is being used for and kind of trying to limit, or if not completely eliminate that kind of potential loss. So.
Um, you brought up another point that I know we're going to be talking a lot about, and that is freeboarding. And I'm sure that's a term that some people don't, you know, aren't aware of. And, you know, we're being streamed here live, so I would like everybody to know what that's all about. It's very important to coastal resiliency, et cetera. So if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. So that I believe is related to the floodplain regulations. So the floodplain is designated area across the state where flooding is predicted. So you have like your 100 year floodplain, your 500 year floodplain, you could have when a storm of a certain size occurs, where the flooding is going to happen. So that's a nature of floodplain. And then there are requirements on when there is development in that area, what's required. And so freeboard is the elevation of the structure. So there's like minimum freeboard standards. But, you know, one thing that we have been discussing is potentially requiring above the minimum standard for certain vulnerable areas. So like if you have two foot elevation that's required, maybe we would increase that to like three or four feet in more vulnerable areas. So.
So when you're saying more, more vulnerable areas, you mean it's below the, the water level or what?
So that would be for areas that are predicted to flood within a certain amount of time. So due to sea level rise, due to storm surge, that kind of thing.
Okay.
And that would be kind of what you're designating with your resilience overlay theoretically is where, where those areas are located.
Okay. All right.
To some extent in the town, so this is one of the areas where there's a lot of, so this is the fire department and the wastewater, wastewater reclamation plant. And so this area in coastal resiliency plan is actually targeted for managed retreat. But there's areas just outside of that that aren't, that maybe should be pulled into the overlay and, and have that freeboard because they may still experience floods at higher flooding events, more severe flooding events. So maybe we draw the, you draw the, the overlay a little bigger than this. So.
I don't know. I don't think storm surge was looked at in the coastal resilience. I had briefly looked through it.
Yeah, I don't think.
So I don't know if that's something too that you want to incorporate into your overlay, looking at the storm surge projections.
That's a good point. Yeah.
So are you saying that our coastal resiliency plan does not account for storm surge?
I think, hold on, I've got that up over here. I mean, I, I, it does address sea level rise, but I do not believe that it specifically addresses storm surge. There are recommendations that I think get into that, but the, the mapping is not.
And Sarah, if you click on the high tide flooding, like under sea level rise there, so that will show you predicted sea level rise by a certain year plus a storm event. And so it's divided out by, I think, a minor storm event, a moderate storm event, and a major storm event. I'm not 100% sure on the definitions for each of those, but
it's a little info button. It has lots of information in it.
And you can also, there, I mean, obviously the historic event one has.
Yeah.
I think Hurricane Isabel was mentioned in here as well and discussed.
That, is that Isabel or is that?
Isabel's the top. Yep.
So you can see that, you know, the, the area that we're talking about was impacted. And so while I think that the resiliency plan is only talking about managed retreat in maybe this area, maybe in sort of this larger area, you're requiring higher freeboard levels.
So when you, when we put these suggestions in, these, and these conditions in, will it mean that we will be applying for grant monies to assist in the current projects having to be elevated? Or, or just insisting that new projects be elevated? How is that, how would that work in an existing community?
Yeah. So I, I'm not, our floodplain person is not here. We do have somebody on our staff who is getting certified as we speak. She's the expert in that. But I think that there are requirements, like when redevelopment happens and then for new development. I think in terms of what you want to require theoretically, you could decide that as long as it's at least as, as long as it meets the minimum requirements for like what the floodplains, FEMA floodplain standards are. But Sarah, you probably might know more.
I am not a certified floodplain manager either. But, you know, obviously you can't require somebody to modify their existing house. As, as flooding events become more severe, it's going to have more impacts on people's existing homes. And so they may choose to elevate it themselves to protect their home. Or they may choose to floodproof it in different ways. And I think that in this overlay, we need to be looking into the zoning ordinance to make sure that both the zoning and the floodplain ordinance allow for the increased height and also different, different ways of floodproofing. I think we may have even talked about amphibious houses.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I think that in terms of the grants, though, there are, there are grant opportunities. So I, but I don't know how they're awarded necessarily, like if there's a, you know, if you have to meet a certain standard in order to qualify to apply for them. Okay.
Yeah. There, I think it's like community based and then the residents apply. But it's really hard to, for individual property owners to get those grants.
For new property owners to get the grants, they, it's hard to get them?
I think, I think it's because the, the grant pool is smaller right now because of what's happening. So there are, so there were a lot more grants than there are now for this. But there are grants available.
Yeah. And I think in terms of like a new build would be required to meet the freeboard requirements and that kind of thing. I'm pretty sure if somebody bought like an older house, demoed it and wanted to build a new house, that would also be required to meet it. But I think for a person who just wants to put an addition on or something like that, they're not going to be required to elevate at that time. Is that accurate?
That's correct. And one of the things that we might want to look at is sort of lot coverage. You know, obviously people do want to put on additions, but if you're, you're putting on an addition and you're putting your structure in more risk, it maybe isn't the thing that makes the most sense. And so maybe a tighter lot coverage requirement in this zone would be appropriate.
Okay. What else? Anybody else? Any questions or anything? I think, you know, you've answered some of my questions that I've had. The fees and lieu were a big, big concern. You know, my fees and lieu were a big concern for me. Always has been a big concern for me. Because we've had a lot of trees taken down and we've had a lot of, probably you know, a lot of issues with that. So. You know, it's one of my, my concerns. But I, we don't want to make it too onerous for people either. That's our problem. You know, we don't want to, a lot of these people will have older homes and, and so there's that balance that we have to seek out, I know. But what I did understand, what you didn't realize is that you can actually use the fees and lieu on private property.
Yeah. And there's actually, Calvert County has a really, one of the more unique fee and lieu programs in that they collect their fee and lieu and then they have like a open grant RFP kind of opportunity where private property owners can say like, hey, I want to plant like an acre of my property. And they'll actually use their fee and lieu monies to do that planting then. They have a whole like board set up who reviews all of the applications every year, and then they decide which ones they want to fund. It's been very successful for them. And my understanding is that they get more applications than they can fill every year. So there's, it seems like a, it's desired by the, the people who live there also. So.
Oh, that's great. That's a good program. Of course, we've got a nice big bureaucracy to manage all that.
We, we also have a section in the guidance document that discusses Calvert in detail. And I think we are going to include some of their like planting agreements and contractual language as an attachment to that people can use as reference.
Yeah. So there, they have, it's like a one page form that the property owner has to sign that basically says like, I'm not going to cut these trees down after they're planted, which meets kind of the requirements in our regulations in terms of some kind of protection over the mitigation once it's implemented.
You know what I've noticing in this area is that real estate agents don't always advise you that you're moving into critical areas.
Yeah.
That's a big problem. And I don't know why the state doesn't come down and say, you, this is a requirement. You've got to fill out this form and people need to see you're moving into a very severe area where it's going to cost you possibly more money. You won't be able to, blah, blah, blah. And that hasn't happened. And I'm trying to figure out why, or maybe it has, and I don't know.
So it, I will say you're not the only person to feel this way. It has come up in the legislative assembly a lot. There actually is, you know, in the pile of things that you initial when you buy a home, there is a page that you're initialing that says, I understand I'm in the critical area, but it's, you know, like page 100 of the 200 pages you're initialing at closing. And our chair is, this is also something that he has brought up, that he would like a lot more there to be more presented to property owners at that time. And I know it was something that we've had conversations about. I don't know, the Realtor lobby is not in favor.
I mean, there, there is a stack that you have to sign. So I understand one more thing is just not what they want to do.
And it will keep them from selling a lot more places. It will. I mean, it'll be a problem.
We are trying, we had a reorg of our staff last year. And we actually have a team, that's our program implementation and education team that I manage. And so we are trying to do a lot more educational outreach to groups like Realtors. Jamili and I actually presented to the Anarundel County Realtors Group this year. And just kind of trying to explain to them what some of the limitations might be for somebody buying in the critical area. You know, I think either people don't know that they're in the critical area or sometimes they may think like, oh, it's the critical area. I can't do anything, which is also, is also not necessarily true. So there's, you know, some misinformation, I think, related to that. But.
Yeah. I would say the education is a big part of our big problem here. And until we get the public on board, it's, it's just, it's so limited as far as how much we can really keep this controlled and, and adhere to the principles that we want to have here. And so I don't know, I don't know what to tell you, but I know I'd like to see. But I know I'd like to see the town do more, but I think the state really needs to get involved.
I mean, we are happy to come down, talk to groups, the communities, citizens, whomever. We are very happy to to do that, Sarah. I don't know if that, if that's something you want to, we can arrange. You know, if there's a opportunity for us to kind of have a open presentation or or session or whatever, Q and A, we can do it however. We're very happy to do that.
Well, that's great. That's good to hear.
Yes, and all my interactions with you all, you've been really willing to come down and meet and and present. So.
What's I like about Chesapeake Beach anyway? We're gonna have lights in a few, few weeks. We're all lighted for Christmas. Okay, anybody else have any questions or any, you know, any statements you'd like to make? We, we, you know, we're lucky to have them here because it's, I've been on this board for a lot of years and I haven't had you down here yet. So this is good to finally get you.
Well, they've been willing this whole time.
They've been willing.
I've been here.
Not everybody's been, the timing hasn't been right for everybody. Nobody down here? I didn't look down here. Oh, well, thank you so much for attending and helping us out. We really appreciate it. And I'm sure if we have any more questions, we'll direct them that way and that we all go that way. And there we have it.
And if there's, I don't know how, as things progress with the update, if there's a need for us to come down and and have another, you know, work session kind of conversation or anything like that, we are very happy to do that as well. So, you know, just let it just.
I'm thinking the town council might want them to come down too.
The town council may have questions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Okay. We'll let them go out. Did you guys need a break for two minutes while changing?
Saint Mary's.
I did.
You looked familiar. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Rachel Larson. Yeah. It was like, if you're not from town, then you're probably from there.
Yeah.
Very red hair, though, right?
It's gotten duller and just, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, how red was red?
Enough that she would be like, you were a redhead.
Yeah, that's right. There, you were a redhead.
No, I still feel like one. I still identify, Sarah.
What does it mean to feel like a redhead?
Identifies as a non-senior citizen, but.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, can we?
Okay, you want, so you want to read?
Agenda to do that instead of going into?
We're going to go into, well, actually, did you want to finish up a little bit of this before we start talking land use?
Well, so the land use classification table is related to the public comment.
I understand that, but I'm talking about any of this. Yeah, did you want to conclude any of that before we move on to the land use?
I guess, I mean, I think everyone is feeling good about our plan, right, to identify this. We have to identify what this area is, right? And I think using the coastal resiliency data, and I did find out that we do have, still have that GIS data. So I, the towns engineer has it. So we'll be able to access that to do the mapping, to create the overlay. And what I think we need to start talking about as our next step is what's going to happen, some of the things we were talking about tonight. What what's going to happen in that overlay? What are the, the regulations going to be? What are the mitigation requirements going to be? You know, what, what do we want to do here?
Can you identify exactly where you want this overlay to go? Can you just, I mean, is it where all the current?
So.
Light blue is, or what are you, what are you thinking?
I would say I would want to, oh, let's see. I'm going to bring over another. So this is our coastal resiliency. So they identified areas when they created this. See, this is hard to see mapping, right? And they identified areas. So I think we want to use either this lower level or I would think the higher level is probably if we're going to increase free board requirements to to use this higher zone, which somewhat coordinates with this level, we're going to have to work out the GIS layer with the engineering firm to to have a map that can go into the zoning. But we can use this sort of as a conceptual, for conceptual discussion this evening or until we have that mapping. So you can, you can see what it's impacting, right? It is going to impact these, all these homes really more to the north of town, north end of town, rather than as you go south, the homes are elevated. And so you're really having more of the impact on the open space.
Any new developments that might be coming, right? That's what.
Any new developments, a lot of the areas, when you did the comprehensive plan and you did the comprehensive rezoning, you identified a lot of the areas that were going to be susceptible and zoned them as resource conservation. So a lot of that work is already done. But there are still some things that can occur there. So I think, I think going back to the coastal resiliency lay, the using this actual data to create the map, the overlay map that we want.
I guess my question really is, without getting into spot zoning, do you create it so it's more of an even line? Or do you go in and out in it? Because I'm seeing that, you know what I'm saying, that it's not. I mean, how do we avoid doing spot zoning if we don't come to straight down like Route 261 or something and?
Well, because it's not really zoning. I mean, it's zoning.
It's an overlay, but it's an overlay. But yes, but the overlay becomes what we're going to be trying to modify all the codes to. So the question is, do we keep an entire area looking, looking the same? Or are you going to have, okay, this little stretch here has free boarding codes, and then these guys do not, and these guys, I mean, it'll look odd.
I think there's, there's, that's part of the discussion, right? Is, are the free boarding requirements going to apply just in the overlay zone? Are they going to apply everywhere? Like, that, that's part of the discussion to have. But I think the free boarding discussion needs to be had. This, this overlay, I can see having stricter lot coverage requirements. Right? And there are higher mitigation requirements, limits on uses, so that it wouldn't be its own. You could still be in the TC and have certain uses that are allowed, but not permitted in the resiliency overlay zone. And it's, I'm not a lawyer, but I would say that it is not spot zoning because it is tied to a specific source, which is related to the landscape and the sea level rise projections. It's not.
Okay.
Random.
It's, I'm sorry, it's not a random identification of a different zone. Yes, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Because it would actually seem more random to then include things just so that you could have us right angles. To be, but like, that's not a property that's actually showing any impact.
Since to require free boarding all like across town, it'd be, it'd be a customizable area, right? Rather than, yeah.
But you might say, you know, put this little circle in into your area. So.
Okay. So anything more for Ms. Franklin before we move on to another? Is there anything else you want to talk about with this particular subject? Tonight?
No, just to let you know that I am working on the, getting someone from Maryland Insurance Agency and also the someone from the Public Works Department, because I know you wanted to speak with both of those folks as well. But I think we can start working on this concept if everyone is in agreement that this concept is how we want to move forward while we also have those presentations. I'm seeing nodding, so.
I think yes. I think it would help if everybody tries to get through the coastal resiliency plan, because then you'll be a little bit more comfortable with what we're talking about. Some of it has a lot of jargon that you may have to look up, but it's, you know, it's pretty well done, I think, as a handbook here, it's pretty good. I noticed, gosh, it's, it's already two years old. It was done in 2023. By the time we actually utilize it, it's going to have a whole new set of recommendations, probably. Okay. So I think we're going right with the speakers. I don't want to get too far behind, but yeah, if everybody can catch up with with understanding this, I know there's a lot of, there are a lot of pages here, but I think you can do it by the next meeting. Okay, let's move on. If we're done with this, we're going to go on to number two, the land use classification table. And because we do have a guest in our audience who has a specific request, I think we could probably jump to that. What was, what was that going to be, by the way? Do we have that specifically at a certain point?
It isn't, it isn't in your memo, but it is not inconsistent with your comprehensive plan. So. Let me just, I just want to make a note that we agreed that I'm going to start drafting that. And so we'll move into, so the, the land use table, what we were looking at last time is the RV zone and some of the uses that weren't permitted in the RV zone for the RV, RV2 for the more intense use. This is an RV1, but it has this specific RV1, if you, okay, so RV1, for example, professional licensed physical therapy office. That's a conditional use in the RV1 zone. And the condition I'm going to bring up so you can actually see that the condition is basically that it's located in this building. And okay, well, here's one that, so O right here is also conditional use in this, in the RV1. And you'll see that the, the condition is the use shall be an integral part of an existing and otherwise permitted mixed-use commercial and multifamily development that was permitted, platted and recorded prior to January 20th, 2025. So I think to resolve this concern, if everyone, you know, agrees, and I think it is completely consistent to have, it is number 48. No, not 48, 42. Thank you. Recreational and fitness studios, what we would do is we would change it to a conditional use in the RV1. And we would make that condition, just like this condition, the same thing. So that would allow that type of use in that building. And we might want to consider, because that building can't be spot zoned into a different zone, it's in the RV1, what other uses might be appropriate there and and apply this condition to them. If this may apply to more buildings, you guys might know. But I think the purpose was to not create a spot zoning situation while also allowing the mixed use that was preplanned for that development.
So you want to, so you think we should go back to conditional use permit for that?
Numbers that again?
Well, it's confusing because we have two different pages, it says 42 on it. I don't know if you noticed. But 42 on page, if you look at the bottom, it says page five. It's recreational and fitness studios. And right now, it says, it says not permitted for all, for all areas, for all zones.
It should probably be permitted in the RV2.
It's a little, okay, so.
So you may, are you in the zoning ordinance?
If we can all find it here.
Yes, you have multiple pieces in your packet, so.
We do.
Yeah.
We do have.
You, you want to go to the second table, I think it is?
Yes, we do.
Because that's the current
Yes.
land use table that matches what I'm showing over here. The other one is my assessment table.
So I guess the, the question is, I see fitness is possibly different than recreational studios, but I mean, you know, I, I hate to lump them all together because they're not necessarily the same, but I guess they could be the same. But what do you have as far as the definition again of recreational fitness studios? Do we have a definition up there? I can't see it.
I mean, from what I'm seeing, I feel like part of a fitness studio, when they're talking about examples of recreational services, they are things that are related to fitness often, but like, it's a little bit what your motivation is. Are you doing this for funsies? Are you doing this?
Well, if you notice on 42, 43, 44, they sort of break down different types of recreation. And actually, 41, too. We've got 41 to 44 are different types of recreation.
There's no, there's no definition of.
There's, there are no specific definitions. I just, I don't want.
What are you worried that it would cover?
That's my problem, is it not having a definition, you know, the sky's the limit. It's kind of like, could you have something really? I don't, I haven't, I'm sorry, but I haven't been in that building and I don't know how noise travels. I don't know how, you know, if somebody came in and wanted to do a really loud, raucous, you know, there's all kinds of fitness programs that require loud music. I didn't know if you would disturb the people above, or I don't know how that building. No, I understand, but sometimes even upstairs, you hear the music from down below. No, not Pilates. I'm talking about.
Then if somebody else was like, now you can have a fitness studio, so now I'm going to have my bar class there, CrossFit or something, it would be a lot louder.
Yeah, exactly. So what you're trying to do is look at a potential use of different kinds of louder, more intense kinds of uses and recreational.
I'm just curious, wouldn't those be things to some extent that the sound regulations would come through with the building and like what it would permit to happen?
Well, let's, let's just look at this. If we, if we let it in RV1, that means the person who lives next door to Commissioner Brown decides to have this incredible dance studio with loud music.
The conditional, it has to be in a pre-existing commercial residential building.
That particular, yeah, that particular one.
Well, I think that's what we're, that's what we're trying to move forward.
Back, yeah, that particular condition. But. Well, see, we're not looking at just your particular building. I'm looking at potentially other situations that yours may also be, you know, an umbrella for, you might say. So I'm kind of concerned about not your situation. I'm just, can we think of how to be a little more specific on that so that we don't end up wishing we hadn't made this so general?
If we look at the RV1, the RV1 is here, where that building is.
Correct.
It is here and here. It is here and here.
And along on the coastal, I think on the coast.
Like right up by North Beach, if you go up, like top right corner.
Up in that area there.
So I don't think in any of these areas, there is a where to go? Otherwise permitted mixed-use multifamily development. Now, this one doesn't have, this one says recorded prior to January 30th, 2005.
The only thing I wonder that could be covered in that, you know, what was supposed to be the Beef and Reef?
What?
The, what was supposed to be in the Beef and Reef, I don't know if that, like, but would that be a building? It's like kind of catty corner almost from Neptune.
Neptune's.
Got those weird windows and it's, yes.
I was just wondering if that would be a building that also would potentially be RV1 mixed, I don't know if that was mixed-use commercial. It probably was built somewhere close to 2005.
It's been a long time.
It was built to be a bar.
Yeah.
Does it have?
Yeah, so it was probably never a mixed-use building. Like mixed-use commercial and multifamily development, which is what condition currently says that it has to be.
That's for a different use, but yes, that's, I'm recommending we use this condition.
So I was just thinking, if we applied that to these other things.
Right.
Were there any other buildings that then somebody's like, oh, I want to CrossFit in that?
Right. It has to have been approved for multifamily and commercial use.
Okay.
Prior to 2005, and I think what Commissioner Brown is saying is that building was not approved for.
I don't think it would have ever been approved for residential as well.
Right.
It's on a property.
Right.
Because that's just the only other build in that came to mind, because most of the other multifamily buildings in our area don't have.
Right. And most of them are not in the RV1.
So in the RV1 area up there by off of 260, I'm trying to think, some of those are single-family homes up there, right? Yeah, I'm trying to think if there's any mixed-use buildings up there. Well, I think is the octagon up in that section, I'm trying to think, is the, you know?
It would have to be an RV2, right?
Uh, this, well, so we need to do it for RV1 because the horizons is right here. But it, we're talking about RV2, and it probably is something we should discuss in RV2. And we can maybe have conditions for, for RV2, the conditions could be more related to the type of fitness studio or the volume, not, and we can't regulate noise in the zoning ordinance, but we could allow things like yoga or Pilates or.
Okay, so does there, anybody have any questions about what we're talking about and where we're talking about allowing this? Anybody have any concerns?
The current, the current business, I'm sorry, I just have a quick question for you. The current business that's there, do they have assigned parking for, like, for that? I know you had mentioned that there's like, there's, there's guest parking and there's other things. Yeah, yeah, and I know you're not talking about, you have possibly six to eight, you said, right? Okay. Okay.
It'd probably be full just with people who live in the building. You don't have to worry about too much extra parking there.
Wonderful, yeah.
Parking lot is never.
Yeah. Are you expecting outside patrons as well? Because sometimes it seems like that gate's shut and you can't get through it. No, I understand. I was just, I'm thinking, is it just after seven? Okay, all right, I wasn't. And were you going to do weekends as well? All right, okay, so I didn't hear from anybody about questions or amendments to anything. Nobody's looking at me like, yeah, would like to make a motion or any, what? Yes.
I mean, one thing that Sarah had mentioned, though, are if we're going to make a motion, are there other things that we also are like, okay, that, I mean, I don't want to overly complicate it if we can make a motion to get this part moved onto town council more quickly, but like, if we're doing it, are there any other things that we feel like, especially in that, in RV1 with that particular condition? Like, it seems to me weird that number 21, professional offices in residence, physician, architect, lawyer, or similar, is not currently allowed in that building. It also seems like therapeutic massage doesn't feel that different from physical therapy and should be allowed, in my opinion. I mean, I would also, financial services, which is number 31, and 32, business services, I actually forget it, that can be allowed, copying contractor shop.
I think the answer is yes, there are a lot more.
Individual.
Ms. Franklin, what is your recommendation about that?
So I, I think it's correct that there are more things that perhaps should be allowed with this specific condition, even really, this retail convenience stores, it's a small space, right? You're not going to have a big store in there, but maybe you can have a small convenience store for the residents, not, to not have to travel as far for things. So, not a nursery.
Can you identify which numbers we're talking about then?
I mean, I was saying 31, 24, and 21.
You said 21. 31, you said?
And 31. Those feel like.
That's a tavern nightclub.
Yeah, you must have made a different thing. 37 is what I see as tavern nightclub, 31, financial service bank.
You want the table that looks like the one that's on this screen?
I'm, I hate to, I hate to do this in a sloppy manner that we're just starting to look now to go through it. We probably should have you go through it and identify which ones would be compatible. You probably know this table better than we do, because I could, I'm thinking I'm going to miss something here.
I would say if you want to make a motion tonight, you can, and then I can, you know, come back and say, hey, I think you maybe should consider adding these three other items next month if you would like.
Yeah, there's, I mean, it's not set in concrete. We can certainly do that. So, but I think it would be nice if we could at least do what's obvious.
So if I, I mean, just if we're thinking about a motion, 21 seems pretty obvious, right? Professional office in residence, physician, architect, lawyer, or similar. That's something you're not going to have lots of foot traffic, not lots of noise, because we're already allowing like a dentist office in the next one, so it seems silly that an architect can be next door. Therapeutic massage feels very similar in nature to me as a physical therapist, like what would happen in that building? We're already allowing offices for business, professional, or government purposes, so that, and artist studios, so those feel like they've already set the precedent for that kind of thing. I don't know what bank would want to, financial service and bank, but if a financial service is also like financial planners or accountants or, you know.
Or nonprofit that helps you.
Yeah. That feels like that would make sense to.
Well, basically, you're almost saying the entire office and commercial uses section, because if you keep going down, they're talking about barber shops.
Well, no, I mean, we're already allowing barber shops.
And, yeah, that's true. Financial services, I'm not sure about the appliance and furniture repair, but.
I mean, yeah, I don't think that those necessarily like, I mean, Sarah said retail stores, I could imagine how maybe they don't, I mean, you could allow it. That feels like in some ways you're bringing in more people.
Right.
Whereas like even a Pilates studio feels like a more dedicated, you know who's coming in and out of that building, and as a resident, you might feel even more comfortable with those uses versus something that's just really open, like a retail space. But if you're already allowing barber shops, that's like, no. So it kind of peeps in that.
You're allowing retail establishments that carry one type of.
Yeah, okay.
Interrelated goods.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
If you have a bookstore, why can't you have a convenience?
Yeah, right, right. You start splitting hairs now.
But that's, it's also fine to make that distinction if.
Okay.
Be willing.
End on it and then just. I think it just doesn't look too difficult. Go ahead and make your motion.
Motion to change some of the permitted use in RV1 on, in the table to a conditional use as is already set forth in.
With number 25.
With number 25. To be applied to number 21, number 24, number 28, and number 31.
And 42.
Oh, and number 42. Yeah, the reason we started this.
Okay, so the motion is to change the RV1 use to, with conditional use as with number 25, be applied to 21, 24, 28, 31, and 42, as indicated on the use chart. Any, any second on that motion? I will second the motion. All right, we need to have questions? Does anybody have any questions about it?
Over the numbers again, this was.
21, 24, 28, 31, 42.
Oh, you like 23.
Like 25. 25 is conditional use in the RV1.
Oh, is the, isn't it the 23?
There's quite a few things that seem to.
This is the condition for 25.
23 is already conditional.
Right. 24 are so similar. Modalities used could be very similar.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I was saying like 23.
Yep.
Is conditional, 24, you can't, but therapeutic massage and PT use similar modality sometimes, so they should be treated the same.
I'm sorry, did I hear a second for that?
You said.
I said.
No wonder I didn't hear it, I said it.
And I didn't hear any questions? Any discussion? Nobody's talking, she's still busy.
I'm talking to myself. I'm talking. I think the 42, if you think of like a Zumba class or something, that could be very loud.
But that is up, we're saying that that's up, you still have the building's sound requirements.
That's that building, but, but that, but.
But there is no other building that's covered.
And it is conditional.
There's no other building in RV1 that meets this condition of a multi, a multifamily commercial building, so like horizons and deal, if they're, if they're, you know, willing to do it, or we, if they're, you know, saying these are the sound requirements.
And explain, please, what a C is.
So it means that I can approve the permit as long as they're meeting those conditions.
Ready for a vote?
Pardon me? Still looking at something.
We're studying. Since we haven't looked at this before, I want to give her as much time, because I, it's a little unfair, but I want to give her the shot. Looking at these. They're not on the agenda. Ms. Franklin, you don't see anything else that would fit into that similar use idea, do you?
Not from a brief look, but like I said, I will look at it specifically before the next meeting, and if I feel like there's another use or two that should go in there, I will bring it forward to you in December.
I do have a question. So you're saying it's multi-use, where, and, and I'm not.
That's in the condition that Sarah pulled up that's being used for 25 currently, so the use shall be integral part of an existing and otherwise permitted mixed-use commercial and multifamily, multifamily development that was permitted, plotted, and recorded prior to January 20.
Is that, is that the two, so that's the 29011R? Man, that's what I see as the conditions or additional use regulations, and I'm just want to make sure that I see where that is.
Did I use the wrong number?
Connected to this chart.
Office for a clinic or medical. It was 22, not 25. That's what's wrong. I gave you the wrong number, I'm sorry. 25 has more. Okay, so you might want to amend the motion to.
Okay, amend the motion so that it reflects the conditions of number 22 on the land usage chart, not 25.
Okay, can you go back to those uses on 22?
You just need a.
20.
Yeah, the condition on 22 is here, and then you just need a second on that amendment.
Yes, let's have a second for the amendment, please.
We'll second that.
I don't think I can make this any bigger. I keep trying to, but. So that's the only, the highlighted one is the only condition?
Say that again, please.
That highlighted condition, that's the only condition on the use.
It's the only condition.
That, that is the only condition currently for having an office or clinic for medical, dental examination i- in that same zone. So it's just applying this same specific condition to all those other uses.
Right, but you were just saying a minute ago that you had the wrong one or something? What was that?
Offices, so offices for professional business or governmental purposes can be, can be in other places in the RV1.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see.
This one is, is keeping certain things.
What page number is that in our, in our?
What, this? This isn't in your packet, but if you have one of my iPads, you can click on the tabs and you can find it. Um, yeah, it's in your zoning book.
Oh, I have my zoning book, so if you just tell me where it is, I'd like to look at that.
See, so I'm not sure.
Why is Horizons in RV1? Why is it not in, in D?
Or I thought it would be in high density, yeah.
I think it can't be an NC because. Because multifamily dwellings are not permitted in the NC zone.
But it could have been the high density, I don't, you know, I still say it should have been.
But you would have had to zone just this one.
That would have been a spot zoning.
Property.
Yeah.
You could have made it NC or you could have made it RV1.
About that.
Even the NC, is that?
Certainly not a single family dwelling.
Oh, that is so true.
Um, so if in your zoning ordinance, it's 290-11, conditions and standards for conditional and special exception uses. And then you go.
I like to, I like to compare things when I must to.
Yeah.
Look at more than one document.
And then it's letter O.
An F, right?
Letter O, off it, so.
A letter O.
Letter O.
Okay.
O1, yeah, it's O1. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, and I think we're, unless you've got any other questions, I think it's somewhat clear. Again, the motion is to change the RV1 zone to conditional use to be applied as, as like number 25, let's see here. Like number 22. I'm sorry. Change it to 22?
Yeah, that's.
I'm sorry, change it to 22.
Want us to restate the motion?
Then restate it, yes.
We had already amended the motion, so do I need to restate?
Restate the amended motion.
Think you have to vote on the amendment, is that right?
We have to vote on the amendment when we hadn't voted for the.
Yeah. I don't know.
We have to clear the men, amendment first, so.
Withdraw that.
Let's withdraw that, and I'm going to.
Do a new one.
Do a new one, all right. Perfect. Okay, I would like to put forth that we change the, what the heck am I saying that we want to do? The land use classification in RV1 um, on points in the chart, number 21, number 24, number 28, number 31, and number 42 to be conditional, and that condition to match what is already listed under number 22 in the land usage chart.
Of number 28?
Yes.
Retail convenience stores?
We had included that because we were discussing the fact that you are currently allowed to have a retail establishment carrying one type of good in that space. So it seemed consistent if you can already have a gift shop florist.
In all of RV1?
No, in RV1 with the condition that it is in a multi-use building that is both residential and commercial. So it would allow at the base floor of Horizons on the Bay, basically, to have a convenience store.
And it includes a pharmacy, and that kind of place might need a pharmacy, so under number 28, pharmacies located in that. So, I mean, we don't want to restrict possibly a pharmacy in that particular. Think.
Oh, I mean, it seems to me somewhat arbitrary between saying that you can have an established carry, carrying one type of interrelated good, but then not other establishments.
Okay, so I think we now have had it restated, and I think does everybody, is everybody clear now with it?
Sure, and then, and then on the conditions or additional uses ones that you are suggesting that we amend will then also carry the coordinating part in code.
All of those would just be having the condition that was already set forth in number 22, which is the use shall be integral part of an existing and otherwise permitted mixed-use commercial and multifamily.
And you're, you're adding that multi-use in RV1 only this restricted. Just multi-use in RV1?
Yes.
RV1, the area that's single-family home.
And Horizons on the Bay.
But it has to have that condition, which is highlighted in green, which is.
And use. The NC area has three shores in it, Alitos, a convenience store, and a physical fitness play. And we can't include Horizons with that floor. Did we leave them with the single-family homes over here?
No. But that.
Makes no sense to me.
I feel like you gotta go back to the, um.
You would have.
Come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission a while back that made those.
Right, we would have to go back, and I remember that the question had come up, and our planner suggested that it say like this just because of, um, he didn't want to spot zone, and he wanted to keep the commercial residential free, and it wasn't going to be mixed use. So, yeah, it gets, it's a big question mark, you know, and that may need to be changed if you feel like we need to change it, I guess.
So, so under this, we would have pharmacies in the homes next to, or in any of the homes along that area, or in any of the homes north of it.
No.
Or on the other side of 261.
No, because of the condition that says that it has to be in an already mixed-use commercial multifamily development. And that's the only building in RV1 currently.
And where will it say that?
That's the condition.
Yeah, but, but that, I will note that it doesn't talk about, you're talking about the professional licensed physical therapy office, that, but I don't think that that would apply to like the, um, you know, like the convenience, you know, the retail convenience stores because they're not professional licensed physical therapy office. Like, Q, if I'm reading it correctly, only applies to physical therapy type issues, correct?
So you set the conditions for any conditional use. So what this motion is, is doing is saying that these other uses are going to have that, they're gonna, there are going to be a new letter in the, in this section, and they're going to have the same condition as this.
Okay.
Which restricts them.
Okay.
Only to the Horizons building.
You're not going to put that in here, but it's only multi-use.
Right. That, now the, the question of the whether the NC is right, and whether, all those are good questions that we should probably talk about. And I think that the concern is right now, there's businesses and home occupations and all sorts of things that are coming in and asking for permits, and I can't grant them a permit because there's issues with the table. So if we can fix the table on a tighter timeline, and then we can come back and look at the bigger issues that will take a little longer to resolve, that allows people to keep moving forward in the meantime, so.
That's before the town council approves it.
Yes, and the town council actually wants to look at this, they discussed that at their work session. They want, they actually want us to look at it more comprehensively, have spoken to them about some specific uses, trying to get those happening faster so that there's not so many denied permits for uses that were never intended for that.
Okay, so, did, did your question get answered, Commissioner Brown?
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor, and we've got a.
Please second.
I, I will second that.
Don't forget when you asked, you seconded.
Well, that was the first one, and now we've got another one, so we have to second this one. Okay, we've, I think we've concluded discussion and questions. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, we got that done. It took us a while, but we got that done. There you go. Good, good luck, congratulations. It took us a while, but we finally got there.
Caveat that it has to go to the town council, and they have to approve it.
Yeah. Okay.
So if you want to kind of loop back.
Yeah, we will.
To the other uses in the RV2, I believe we had gotten to.
We haven't gotten, we've got, let's go to professional school, studio for music and art, instruction, dancing, and school, et cetera.
That's.
But that's uses for RV2, so.
I thought we got that. I think we.
I don't think we did that. No, I don't think we did, did we?
Look on your minutes. Bang on your minutes.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Night.
Look on your minutes.
Second page. Second.
Yeah, we do, okay, good. Yeah, continue with discussion with use 11, professional school. Considered move to approval on professional schools and a special exception.
I think we, I think we got all of them. I think we got that second chunk, and we're going to allow those all as special exceptions without conditions, so that the Board of.
And the, oh, the last one, the one we did last week, I'm sorry, two weeks ago with the home daycare, I mean, the non homeowner occupied daycare, that's a special exception too?
No, that's the, that one was conditional. Move to allow this, uh, hold on, move to allow this in all residential districts. No, I don't, I think it's just allowed. I'm looking at the motion I have written, what is on the minutes, in case I didn't type it right?
I don't think we really.
All residential districts if requirements are met.
Oh, because there are conditions, it's already conditional, yes, that was why. So, so it does have conditions. And they are, I think it's the first one. Nope, it's not. F, there are letter F in your table. And so, I'm sorry, there are letter F in your ordinance, the conditions. Um, so that one was approved separately, number 11 was approved separately, and then all the other uses that are listed in my memo were approved as special exception uses, which would move us into discussing customary home occupations. Unless there's other uses that.
What number is customary home occupations?
Oh.
Oh, 60.
Sharon says 60. Yes, you're right.
You're good at finding these.
Oh, I probably wrote it down. Yeah. Um, and that one, so the previous section we were talking about, and that we were just talking about now, is the uses for RV2. And the next section of my memo talks about customary home occupation because that's beyond just RV2. But I think it is worth the question, so you just approved allowing certain uses in the RV1. Are they uses that you want to allow in the RV2 as well? Or not, because they're not, they're not as compatible if there's not the multifamily condition?
Yeah, I mean, would anything in RV2 even be able to meet that current?
Well, you could allow them in RV2 without the condition, right?
Okay.
If you wanted to do that. I think the retail establishments kind of goes outside of what's compatible with the comprehensive plan. But I would say.
And even, even the fitness centers feel like that could be something that would be, because that's still like, even as a small one, that's still 12 people at a given time, that's a lot of parking.
Right.
But I do feel like things like, like the architect lawyer, what number was that? Like professional office, that feel, 21 feels like, that makes sense for RV2. Therapeutic massage. I don't know, lots of those feel like they do make sense for RV2.
So do you want to permit any of them in RV2? Before we move on to home occupation?
I think by and large, most like, where I'm for lots of uses and lots of things. As a rule, I'm for lots of uses and lots of things as a rule. I mean, like, I, I think there are exceptions, like things like, if, if we're talking about having a fitness studio in RV2, that seems more questionable because of like the number of cars and parking. But I do think things like professional office, licensed physical therapy, therapeutic massage, offices for businesses or professional thing, oh, well, those are already, well, I don't know what the, what's the condition RV2?
Or offices for businesses.
For number 25.
Yeah, that's the one that I accidentally gave you.
That one had quite a few more.
Yes, so that, that's number, that's letter R if you're going back to your zoning code.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. We've got, time is running out on us as far as looking at this, and we should probably already know what we want to do here. Um, if we go back to these uses, I think we, we should probably go down one at a time and just talk about each one, because otherwise, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get through this at all. The library, museum, community center, adult education center, or similar open to the public or connected with a permitted use or not connected as a private business. I, I, I'm on our agenda, so if you go on to the agenda where it's a very uses for RV2, that seems like it requires a lot of intense use, parking, pedestrian traffic. I, for some reason, think that should needs to say, stay in the commercial zones. So I'm not willing to go anything but commercial zones for that.
So the last meeting, and I don't remember what the motion was, but the, those ones all went into special exception. so that they would go before the Board of Appeals.
I don't remember us voting on all that, going to special exception.
It was like a, was there a motion for it?
I thought that was just for the professional school studio for number eleven that we did it, but not, I don't, I didn't think we had gotten to twelve, library, museum.
Okay, I have. Allow these as special exceptions without conditions written down. But let me, I just want to show you what that is, just so you can see it as you're considering each of these uses as an option. So, because they have to go through the Board of Appeals. And the Board of Appeals has this set of standards that the establishment, maintenance and operation of the special exception will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety or general welfare. That the special exception shall be such that it will be harmonious in the character as well as appropriate in appearance with and will not be injurious to use and enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for the purposes already permitted nor substantially diminished and impair property values within the neighborhood. Three, the establishment of the special exception will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding properties for the uses permitted in the districts. Four, establishment and operation of the special exception will not adversely impact the capacity and/or safety of the town infrastructure such as roads, water and sewer drainage, et cetera. Five, the special exception shall be such that pedestrian and vehicle traffic associated with such use will not be hazardous to or unduly conflicting with the existing and anticipated traffic in the neighborhood. And six, the establishment, maintenance and operation of special exception are consistent with the town of Chesapeake Beach comprehensive plan. So that's, in addition to like creating your own conditions, it's an option to use this as, and that kind of covers a lot of the concerns that are coming up. So as you look at each use, you can consider whether you want to not allow it, allow it with conditions, or you can allow it with this special exception that kind of creates its own set of conditions.
But we don't, we don't want everybody going to the Board of Appeals. I mean, that's not our goal. Our goal is to avoid that and our goal is to try and come to some conclusion ourselves. And I think when you look at a residential community, I think what we need to do is protect the residential community, even though RV two has always been mom and pop businesses have been allowed. But a library and a museum are not mom and pop businesses. And a community center, adult education center, that is more intense use with more parking, more traffic. And I don't think it's appropriate for any residential community. You know, I think we've got to be careful about protecting our, it's in the comprehensive plan. We need to protect our residential communities and their characteristics of, you know, quiet, safe areas for people to live, families to live. And, um, I mean, it, you know, I'm really concerned that we are getting too liberal with our ideas of what we can do in a residential community. And even though RV two is historically had mom and pops in there without too much issue, I know they also still love their little tiny cottages and their little quaint community and they chit chat back and forth, but they still don't have a lot of parking. They still don't have a, you know, not every place has a garage. I mean, it's not like my area where nobody has a garage, but it certainly has a little bit more land in the RV two. But I think, I think we've got to be careful about our residential communities. I mean, I'm still concerned about, you know, us being cognizant of how this quiet little community that we, the, um, the HOAs don't need protection. Who needs protection or is this little tiny stretch of coastal area that is slowly but surely trying to get out of what was historically a tough time where people weren't maintaining their homes. But now we've got full-time residents. We've got people who have been spending a lot of money to buy some of these houses and they have to protect their investment. If I, you know, paid a lot of money, five hundred thousand dollars for a house and then all of a sudden a community center pops up next door. And yes, I can see we've got to go through the conditions, but I think that's our job. Say, you know, that's a residential community. I don't think a community center really works there. We'll put that in a community center. A community center or an adult education center. And you know what the RV two is, you know? I mean, does everybody know what the RV two is? It's, um, if you look on your map, you'll see that it's, um, all resident, I mean, you know, all residential looking. You don't want to change the nature or the characteristic of the outside of the houses. You don't put a lot of asphalt in front of a, of a house to increase parking. You want to keep it looking like a house, a residential area. So I don't see how this would fit in there myself. I'm not even sure about the public building next, below it. Public building, a recreational facility owned and operated by Chesapeake Beach. I'm not even sure I understand why that's even something that we even need to talk about because.
Which, which number are we talking about?
Well, we were talking about twelve and then she jumped to fifteen.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at my list in, you know, the agenda.
Well, what number?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at my agenda item right here that we're going down the list there. But, um, okay, so the professional school.
If you're in my memo.
I'm sorry?
My memo from October fifteenth.
Thank you, thank you. So the library and museum is, is the number twelve on the chart? Okay. And it's not conducted as a private business. So to me, uh, number twelve, it's not conducted as a private business. That just seems over intense in the RV two. And we want to keep houses for housing. We have a low housing stock, one of our biggest issues in the.
Put H up on the screen. Edition H. Non-mart area, ten thousand square.
Yeah.
Those are an RV one.
Well, I mean, I think mine's about ten thousand, but the point is you can buy. Yeah, you can, you can buy, my lot, I have three lots put together. You can buy up cottages if you, if you know, if that's, you know, what you want with this situation. In fact, I think somebody has bought up like a few of those together. But I'm just saying, uh, you know, what if you could have, and you know, a ten thousand square foot lot somewhere? Or what if you, um, I think there are probably areas in the RV two that, that have ten thousand square foot lots. Or you could buy up your neighbor's property or whatever if you were gonna do this. It's just a public.
Have you been to the museum in North Beach?
Well, it's small. I do know it's small and I don't think, yeah, I haven't been there, no, if you're asking me that.
It's super sweet and it's like a cottage industry. And if somebody were, and, somebody were, I mean, I don't actually know the ten thousand square. Oh, that's the lot then. And I've also been to museums like that in other parts of the country and they are like sweet and they can offer a draw and like, nobody's ever, when in North Beach, nobody's. People are rarely at the railway museum, even though that has like more tourists.
I guess, again, my, my point is I don't, I don't think we should be taking up residential areas for non-residential uses. That just, you know, kind of limits our residential area. And I think a lot of people want to live here and they can't find housing. And then we start turning them into other uses, there goes our housing stock again, you know? And I, I just think we're doing ourselves a disservice. I, I know a little li, a little library here, a little this or that would be cute. But I, I think, again, if we're looking at what is necessary, what's necessary is more housing. We, we don't even go to that little museum in North Beach. I mean, you know, we could do, be doing that, but we don't do that.
Some people do. I haven't, but I plan to.
Funny, yeah. You've been here thirty years or something, I mean, you know, whatever. I'm just saying, I, I, you know, I am very conservative when it comes to uses because I think we had a huge discussion with the, the plan on the fact that, oh, there's not enough housing. There's not enough low income or enough housing that people can afford. Guess when they can afford housing? It's still in this area because these are older properties. RV two is still somewhat affordable. No, we do not have a motion on the floor.
Why are we discussing?
Because we're trying to, we're trying to learn.
We should have a motion. Then we can discuss it.
Then make a motion.
All right, I make a motion that we allow, uh, libraries, museums, number twelve uh, in the RV two and RV one. Well, it has the conditions on there.
You would have to.
You have to say it's a condition.
You'd have to say that those conditions would be.
Uh, if you put it in here, the condition is there.
If we make it a C and not a P. If you just make it permitted, then there won't be conditions. But if you make it a C, then there will be conditions.
With conditions.
Second, your motion.
Okay, anybody want to discuss it?
I think, um, I come from a slightly different perspective than Cindy where I, I do think that we need housing. But I think to have a thriving community, you also need to have resources and things for that community to engage in. And as somebody who has grown up here and has a lot of, you know, my great grandparents moved here and I kind of like have a, I, to me, that feels like what the beaches were, was this thriving kind of integrated thing. And it's gone through a lot of waves, but I think to, the more that we can do to have those kinds of resources available, um, that seems to help the character of the town rather than being detrimental, in my opinion.
Uh, Commissioner Brown?
I agree with, uh,
With Rachel? And yourself?
Yeah, you agree with yourself.
Yes, this sort of reminds me a little bit, you know, the Barnes Museum in Philly that used to be, it's a great collection. It used to be in, I don't house, it was sort of in Balakinwood and Lord and Taylor. And it was horrible for the neighborhood because there are just people walking by, not necessarily quietly. Now they're in a new building. So I'm a little mixed use about it myself. Because on the one hand, I believe in that kind of diversity that you feel that things are thriving, there's like a buzz, you know? You feel, it makes you feel like you're kind of part of something. At the same time, the streets, like the non-HOA areas, the streets just don't, don't really seem to lend themselves. I mean, I'm pissed that they're paving the road, on Cox Road because it's disaccommodating me, if that's a word, when I have to wait for the flag to let me go through. And that's like a, a nano, micro aggravation. And so I just, I, I don't want to agree with you entirely just because.
Well, don't.
No, but, but I mean.
Nobody else is, my wife could do it.
Feel torn. I, I, I don't know what the answer is. I understand the kind of vibe that, that, that means that something is living and ongoing that you feel. And I also feel that, you know, you don't know what the effect will be in an area. And we could decide something that could cause harm later. So that's all I want to say. Am I allowed to abstain? It's voting, okay.
Sorry.
I don't have people for you to abstain. Uh, yes, Commissioner Chris, what do you say there, man?
Yes, I agree, um, with, uh, with, with, with Rachel over there. Having a community that has, that has things like libraries, community centers, I think brings more to the community and more for, more amenities and more honestly, free, free things that are available within the community that I don't think is a negative, that like doesn't have the negative impact, especially in the areas that we're talking with the conditions that we're talking about setting forth. I think it's a, it's a minimal impact rather than.
You know it's minimal.
Because of the sizes of the lots, I don't think it's a, uh, I don't think it's gonna be a, as big of an inconvenience as I think that we can imagine in our head. So, to me, um.
Catastrophe, catastrophizers, however you say it.
Those are the type of inconveniences that I'm okay with. Community centers, libraries, like, I love that. I love that about my community.
Play devil's advocate, but that's because you know that one won't be able to go next to your house.
I would love one next to my house.
Well, I'm not sure you would love one next to your house because the negative impact could be, the negative impact could be much different than what you, and it could be greater than you think. I mean, you could have trash, you could have, um, people coming at different hours thinking it's open and it's not open. The, the point again is you're changing the character of a residential community. And, yeah, I would love to see all this stuff and I love the buzz, but in the areas that, that they're not going to impact residents, you know? Small, families with small kids who are trying, trying to take naps. People who may have to work night, uh, may have to work the night shift and have to sleep during the day. People who want a quiet community. This is what I think about when I think about putting more intense use into a community. Plus the fact that I, again, I think we need more housing. So to take out two or three houses to do these things for our one, one time a year use or something seems a little bit, you know, um, uh, how should I say, uh, inconvenient, inconvenience? Inconveniencing for, for the people who live there and for my little need once a year to go there. I'm just concerned that, yeah, a minimum lot is ten thousand, but ten thousand isn't, really isn't that big. When some of these lots are pretty good over here in the RV two. And if you get two of those together, you've got yourself, you know, a community center.
Sure.
And it could be a community center that somebody else bring, it's not private. It's not gonna be a private, uh, why do I think it's not private use?
It's not because it has to be like a nonprofit.
It's, yeah, or something like that, so, so. So anyway, I'm just, I'm concerned about changing up the historical nature of, of the way it's been. And that would change it up.
I mean, the historical nature, how it's been adding more houses can also be detrimental to the area as well. You know, increasing the volume of people that are already in our small town, right? So.
Which historic nature?
We need more housing, that was the point. The point is, we need housing, um, but we don't necessarily need, you know, centers of, of, you know? Anyway, okay, I think I read the numbers here and I think I'm, I'm on the losing end. So I think I'm just gonna call the question and go ahead and vote because I don't think I can convince anybody otherwise. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Say aye, okay? And no, it's a no. Okay, so it's two against three. Do we need four for a quorum on that?
Yes.
I think we do, actually.
You said it's what, thirty-three and a third to the.
But I think, I think.
That's what our rules say, four is a quorum.
I do, I think we need four on this situation. I think we need four. Um, okay. We'll have to, I'm, I'm sorry, we, I forgot, we have to have four for that.
So one thing I just want to identify is that the, I, I, I understand like why certain uses are allowed in the RV one and not in the RV two, right? Because there is this multifamily development in the RV one. But the only difference in the land use table between the RV one and the RV two is the housing densities. So none of these small mom and pops are allowed in the RV two. So I think it's important, I mean, I, I know you don't have enough people to kind of make these votes, but it's important to kind of, after this meeting, everyone to sort of think, think this through. Like the RV one and the RV two were separated for a reason. And making sure that we're being consistent with why we separated it and we're allowing the uses we intended to use in the separation. Think it's helpful if we have that, you know, what, what was the, I mean, I wasn't here, right? I didn't write the comprehensive plan with you. And I know that there's several council members who, or commissioners who didn't either. But what was the intention? And, and when we're allowing certain uses in RV one and then not allowing them in RV two, at least those uses that are conditional in the RV one. We have to think about whether they should be allowed in the RV2 because we're now allowing more intense. In your, your zoning, you're allowing more intense uses in the less intense area and so. An argument could be made by someone wishing to put a use in the RV2, that that is problematic. And so. Figuring out how to manage that. And again, maybe it is a larger problem of whether that specific lot should have been in NC and then NC would have to allow. Residential and so that it's. It's all kind of thorny, it's just that we want to make sure that we're not allowing more intense uses in the, in RV1 than in the RV2. So at least in these areas where the conditional uses are permitted, it's something we should talk about.
All right, so. How do you want us to proceed with next meeting?
I know that council is anxious to see some land use table changes. There are more. There's more issues that have to be addressed than I put in the memo because I want us to, I wanted us to sort of take a bite. Size piece and be able to push that on before we look at things like ADUs. There's also, we also need to talk about the RC a bit. And I think those are going to be bigger discussions. And the idea is, let's see if we can solve some problems for people sooner, so if we can maybe just sort of go through the. Kind of make a decision on the RV2. At the next meeting and. Get to the home occupations. I think if we could even just send those two pieces over to the council, it would help alleviate a lot of issues.
Okay, I've got a question. Why, I'm trying to figure out why this hasn't already been settled and why we don't have this in the minutes from a couple of years ago when we had this all. All right, you know, this was all done already. And approved by the town council. Yet were we doing the entire thing within less than two years? I'm trying to figure out why.
Because when you, when you have a district that the purpose of it was to be primarily residential and less intense than another.
No, no, I'm just saying, we had this entire chart completed, it was all done.
There's, there's, there's things in it that aren't consistent. With the comprehensive plan and. In my professional opinion, create challenges in. Your zoning regulations and enforcing them.
It would be easier to deal with the challenges as they come along.
So that's what I'm trying to do here. I'm trying to be. It might be useful for us to talk about, and I can talk with the town administrator about having a closed session. To discuss some of it. My hesitancy is. That I think some of the discussion that you're asking me to have belongs in a closed session. But I'm not certain, so I would, I would feel better not answering now and asking that question and determining if we need to do that. Than saying something that I shouldn't say in an open.
Okay, all right, so it's, thank you for that. We will come back next month and have more fun with this.
And when is that meeting?
Yes, the meeting for next month is, is the 17th, December 17th. Um, and is there any comments via Commissioner, Commissioner Smith, anything that you want to talk about quickly, one minute?
In closing?
Yes, we're going to close off, so.
Just a real quick shout out to the firefighters that responded off of St. Anne Road and all the first responders and just want to make sure, and our website has the. The Chesapeake Beach Relief Donation Fund, which has been, I guess, has been doing well, so it's right there on our site, but yeah, just a quick shout out and. I know there's a couple dozen people that are, that are out of a house right now, so, yeah, it's tough stuff, but, um, we got a good community that can. Strong and we can help out, so, yeah.
Anything for you? No, and Rachel? No? Okay, good. Then do I have a motion to adjourn until December 17th?
I make a motion.
Not everybody at one time. Do I have a second? Okay. All right, we all got it. Thank you. Goodbye, it's been lovely.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thanksgiving.
Oh, yes, and absolutely, happy Thanksgiving.
Going to California?
I am not, I am right here partying with my family in Owens.
Ooh.
Yes.
Owens, proud Owens person here.
Slow down.